Welcome, this is the Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Call to order and roll call.
Okay, I'm Vice Chair Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Swat.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Goss is excused, we have a quorum.
Alright, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the regular meeting minutes from April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two? Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve?
I second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number two, consideration of public comments, those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance, action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one. A, hybrid meeting. In-person attendance, call-in participation and written comments, in-person, those wishing to address the commission in person do not need to pre-register, but space is limited and will be allotted on a first come, first served basis. Attendance priorities will be given to presenters first and then non-presenters. Two, call-ins, those wishing to address the commission by telephone will need to register by nine AM on May tenth by emailing planning@cityofkingman.gov and provide their name and address, telephone number. They will be using email and agenda items that they would like to comment on once registered, a link with additional instructions will be provided. Only those who have pre-registered will be admitted to the meeting. Three, written comments, all written comments supposed to be submitted prior to nine AM on May tenth by emailing planning@cityofkingman.gov or dropping off the comments at the Community Development Center department in the main city complex at three ten North Fourth Street. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting via Channel Four or on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Item three, reports. Past council action. City of Kingman appointed two new members to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill two vacancies. These new members are Mike Blair and Michael Quinn, new members will begin serving in their roles. You guys wanna give us a little rundown on why you're on the Planning and Zoning Commission or what you're looking to do?
Well, having been on a commission before, six, six different times, I felt like getting back and try to get back in and keep the city going like it's supposed to. You know, keep our growth between three and four percent, I think we're gonna be doing great. There's a lot of things that should be changed and hopefully addressed a lot of it in the general plan, but some of that hasn't been invited to either, so I'd like to get back and happy to be back on.
My name's Michael Quinn, I was born and raised in Kingman, own small businesses here in town for the last twenty years. Was just recently the Chamber of Commerce Chairman, outgoing chair this year, and I just wanted to be part of just watching Kingman continue to grow.
Well, I'm glad to have more members because it was getting pretty, pretty light at times, so it's good to have you on board. Number four, new business, discussion regarding potential zoning code text amendments. Planning and zoning commission will discuss potential amendments to the Kingman zoning code that was adopted on April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. A number of minor substantive corrections have been identified as well as possible substantive changes that would require approval of text amendment to the code. The intent is to provide a summary of each issue that has been identified by staff to the planning commission and elicit feedback and direction. Go ahead, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission. This is a, and I'm just gonna give a little background to our new, for our new commission members. Sure why that's, oh, I see, okay. So roughly three years ago, we began, yeah, about three years ago, we began the process to update our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance was adopted initially in nineteen seventy-one. There were approximately two hundred and ninety text amendments over the course of fifty years that was in place. We hired a consultant in two thousand and nineteen to help us really thoroughly update the code. We, going through the current, the code at the time, identified problems with the code as being inconsistent, disorganized, antiquated and confusing. And so the new code is a much more modern code, contemporary, innovative, coherent, concise, and we've had the ability to use it now for a period of almost a year. It was adopted April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the effective date was June sixth last year, so as we've been getting used to new code and applying it in real-world situations, we have identified a few things that we would like to potentially change in the code. And that's not unusual whenever you adopt a new code that's this much of a change from what you were previously used to. Sometimes things don't work right, or sometimes you just identify things that need to be tweaked a little bit, and that's not a failure of the code, it's just, it's just pretty common, that was something our consultant said to us, they expect that you'll be doing this about a year into the, into the new code. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We started, we identified, kind of created two different categories, one is non-substantive corrections, and these are often referred to as Scrivener's errors, those are just minor things like punctuation errors, misspellings, a lot of incorrect section references in the code, we refer to other sections in the code when we're describing something, and as we've gone along, we've just found these little errors, so these do not require any public hearings by the commission or the council, these are just minor things that don't change the substance of the, of the code. But in the interest of a public, of public scrutiny and transparency, we wanted to provide that information to you. And that's actually in the next, and I know you can't read this, but it's in your packet, if you're, if you want to look it over, it's, the page number is listed, the code section, that it's within, what type of error it is, in this case, they're all, we call Scrivener's errors, and what the current text says and what the proposed revised text would be, so just some examples, we refer to the Historic Preservation Commission a couple places, it's been changed, the name's been changed. There's a lot of, like I said, errors worth, where it's referring to a section, it's the wrong number, that type of thing, so that's, that's that part of the changes. There's also a number of potential text amendments that have either been identified by the staff or in some cases, the development community, that if they were adopted, they would be substantive in nature and would require processing an actual text amendment, so I'm just gonna kind of go through these, and I think we will kind of, oh, and this is the slide that shows those more substantive changes, and also it's by page number, code section, the general issue that, that we've identified and potential action for consideration. So again, it's all in your, in all in your memo. So what I think we'll do is, is after we finish, after I finish kind of describing each item, we'll see if the commission members have any questions, any thoughts. We're not making any, any decisions tonight, this is just for discussion and give some feedback, and then we potentially could bring these back for a consideration of a text amendment in the next couple of months. So the first item is the citizen review process. In the new zoning code, in addition to the public hearings that are required by the Planning, Zoning Commission and the City Council, we now require two neighborhood meetings for certain items that would go before this commission that includes general plan or specific plan amendments, conditional use permits, rezoning or annexations. And those neighborhood meetings are actually required to be set up by the applicant. It can involve staff, but we're not required to attend those meetings, it's, it's really something that's set up by the applicant, and then we review their plan, their, the date that they want to have those meetings, the location, and give them the green light to do it before they actually come, before you, for the public hearing. We had a local developer question the need for these additional meetings. We feel that they are considered a best practice in the planning field, it's something that our consultant recommended and was adopted into the code. And it does allow for an informal discussion to take place to identify concerns of the public at early stages of development and helps inform on potential issues and possible design solutions. Basically, it's to, to try to maybe stop the angry, I don't want to say the angry mob, but the angry, the concerned citizens, they may show up to a P and Z meeting or council on an issue. This gives an opportunity to identify those issues before it maybe even comes to you and perhaps there's some solutions that can be worked out before it comes before you. I think the staff could support reducing these neighborhoods to one meeting, especially for cases that are not expected to generate significant public comment. We don't necessarily have to have two meetings every time. The, the code currently does allow the community development manager, which is Sean, the power to require more than one meeting when the conditions warrant, or perhaps there's a meeting held and the applicant makes some significant changes to their plan between that meeting and when it comes before you, that might be a reason to hold another meeting. So we would continue to, to want to have that power maintained, but we could see potentially reducing the number of meetings to one. So if, with that, I'll see if you have any comments or thoughts or questions on that.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
So in the previous zoning code, no meetings were required.
We, we didn't require them, in some cases, we recommended them, but generally speaking, the first meeting that any neighbors would have attended would have been this, this P and Z commission meeting.
Okay, and just so that I kind of understand what would fall under those general plans or specific plan amendments and so forth, let's say someone wanted to build a garage in their, in their backyard, is that something that would require a community meeting?
Not, no, that unless you needed a rezoning or something to be able to do that, which you typically wouldn't, I see a condition, a case where that would occur. It would only be if, if what they're doing requires one of these other changes, either change to the general plan, a conditional use permit for whatever reason, a rezoning, or I guess if there was some property being considered for annexation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Rich, have, we've been doing this long enough to have a gauge for about how many people are attending these?
We, we've only had, well, we've had a couple of conditional uses come before you, and one of which I know that they did hold neighborhood meetings and nobody showed up. There's another one that's coming before you, I think next month, and I think they held a meeting and they had a couple of comments. But there, I, I wouldn't say we've had any particularly controversial case since the new code's been adopted, so we haven't had anyone object to, to having the two meetings. I do know within the case of the Tin Can Alley, they asked to be able to do one-on-one meetings with neighbors, and they did also send out notices as well to people they wouldn't be able to contact, and that is actually another option that is available through the code, that can be approved by the community development manager, which, which in this case it was.
So Commissioner Waters, I've been involved in three projects that we've had to do these at, all under the conditional use permit process. One project, we didn't have anybody come to either of the meetings. Another project, we had five or six come to the meetings, and then another one, one at each meeting. To give you an idea how many people. And there isn't, there aren't any requirements as far as spacing on the meetings either, you can have them back-to-back. You could have it on a Tuesday at six PM and then Wednesday at ten AM. In my opinion, there isn't a benefit to having two meetings.
Rich, yeah, if there's no other comments, we'll, we'll move on to the next one. And these next two ones are, are I think fairly simple in concept. So we do allow, under the new code, tiny homes. In the R two, which is a multifamily zone, and the RMH six zone, which is a manufactured home zone currently in Kingman, tiny homes are allowed on lots as small as twenty-five by a hundred in the R two zone, we have a lot of older subdivisions that were recorded prior to nineteen forty-five, and were originally subdivided in these substandard twenty-five by a hundred or forty-five hundred foot lots. Again, we do allow tiny homes on lots as small as that, as long as they can have a sewer connection and as long as they can meet the setbacks. Minimum setbacks on the sides would be five feet, so you're talking about a fifteen-foot wide tiny home on a twenty-five by a hundred foot lot. As I mentioned, we do also have forty-five hundred foot lots in the R two district. The way the, the table is set up in the code, it doesn't really address the forty-five hundred foot lots, but logically, if you allow them on standard-sized lots and you allow them the small, smaller ones, it would follow that you would allow them on the forty-five hundred foot lots. We've made that interpretation, but it's not codified in the, in the code, so we're just recommending that that language be incorporated into the code. So, any questions on that one?
Rich, this may be a dumb question, but is there any way you could build multiple tiny homes on one of those forty-by-one-hundred lots?
You would only allow, be allowed to have one per, per lot.
You couldn't stack them? Like we've seen when I was on the commission before, where we went and visited some like Tucson, but they were stacked. And Phoenix was doing it too.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, then that becomes more of an apartment unit, and but the way the code is written, you're, in, at least in the smaller lots, you're only allowed to put one unit. You would need at least a six thousand square foot lot to have more than one unit.
Just a little feedback, I'm in favor of the tiny homes on the bigger lots, it's a good idea.
Okay, the next item is, is the multifamily standards for, in, in commercial zones, so we kind of distinguish duplexes from multifamily dwellings. Multifamily dwellings are defined as three or more units in the same building, and those are allowed in all the multifamily zones as well as the commercial zones in Kingman. In the multifamily zones, there are, there is a standards for maximum densities. For example, in the R two zone, you can have up to nineteen units per acre, R four allows up to twenty-eight units per acre. We also have minimum floor area per unit and minimal usable open space per unit. However, there are no specific standards in the commercial zones. Those were in, in the old code, but somehow didn't get translated into the new code. And we kind of made that your interpretation, but again, we'd like to codify that in the code so it's clear. So we would, would propose adding that language in the code so that it clearly states which densities and which areas per unit we, we require depending on the commercial zone that a multifamily development is located within. Any, any questions on that one? Nope, okay. Move on to the next one, item four, accessory structure setbacks. So for accessory structures that include, that include detached garages, sheds, even accessory dwelling units, we have a minimum setback on the rear side of four feet in most of the residential zones. There is a statement in the, in the code that says that that says accessory structures under two hundred square feet or over, over two hundred square feet, or I guess it says accessory structures requiring a building permit, which are those that are over two hundred square feet, must meet the setbacks. But in practice, we've been applying that also to anything that is under two hundred square feet that requires a minor improvement permit. So really, the language needs to be modified to state that. I think we intended to put that in the code that way and somehow it got missed. So we want to make sure that that language is in there. Also, there is a section in the code regarding encroachments. Now, there's certain types of things that could, could encroach into setbacks, like a chimney or a, a bay window, stairways, there's a few other things like that. There's a section in there that refers to accessory structures having some type of encroachment allowance. As I mentioned, we already have a four-foot minimum rear setback, and we don't, we don't allow encroachments in the side or the front yards for accessory structures already. It really doesn't need to be in that table because if you read it literally, it would, it, it would literally mean that you could have a two-foot rear yard setback for a, an accessory structure under certain circumstances, I, I suppose, and we don't presently really allow that. So we would just propose taking that out of the code and just leaving the four-foot rear setback allowance for the accessory structures. Any, any questions on that one?
And, and that would include even just something as simple as a small garden gazebo or something for grandma planting some vegetables? Things like that, anything under two hundred square feet essentially?
Right, anything that, yeah, that would be a minor improvement permit.
So if you're closer than four feet to the wall, you're outside.
Right.
Right, okay, thank you.
And then item five is the mini storage warehousing, this was actually brought to our attention from a local developer. There's a statement in there that says supplemental, you know, under the supplemental standards, it says a storage unit must not exceed ten percent of the gross side area and must comply with the warehousing requirements, which is another supplemental standard in the code. And the local, local developer asked, does this mean that you can only use ten percent of your site for mini storages? And we said, no, that's not really the purpose of this, of this part of the code, but in reading it, it really didn't make a lot of sense to us because it does appear that this regulation is really intended to govern accessory outside storage areas that are associated with a mini storage development. So someone might have an RV storage area, and then they also have mini storages on their site. And, and it looks like that's what this regulation is intended to govern, but the language is not very, very clear, so we would just propose revising that language to make it clearer to, to anyone reading that section. Any questions on that? Okay. Next one is solar energy systems. The code actually does say that solar mounted, roof-mounted systems are not to be visible from any street, and has raised concerns of developers and solar companies. In practice, we haven't really been enforcing this code, this part of the code, because we recognize that, you know, typically their roof-mounted systems are situated so they need to, so they can maximize the solar gain, and not every house is oriented in a way that, that can allow those panels to be on a side that's not visible from the street. Also, there's a standard there about needing to be rectangular in shape, and this may not be possible depending on the configuration of the roof. So we would support removing those two requirements in the interest of, you know, encouraging reusable or renewable energy systems in, in Kingman. The other part of it is that ground-mounted systems require either fencing or landscaping for screening and safety purposes where they are allowed in the side of rear yard. However, we don't define what the minimum fence height is. Also, the, the maximum height of a system is, is eight feet in the code, but it doesn't really clearly define where that should be. Is it at the pivot point of the, of the panel, or is it the highest point of the panel or the lowest point? So we're proposing to clarify that with some language about where you measure that, those panels from. Any questions on, on that?
I just got a question, if it's in your backyard and your backyard's fenced, you don't have to specifically fence the solar panels, right?
I, I think as long as the fence is there and it, it, it creates, it screens that system from the street, I think we're okay. Is that, are we applying a hearing?
That's, that is correct, and there are also some other parameters that would come into place as far as the, the way the electrical's done. Obviously, we want to reduce, you know, any type of electrical shock and things like that. A majority of those systems, those things are already in place, but it's just kind of something we have there in order to ensure the safety of everybody, so.
Where it says for screening, purpose of that in particular, you mean like beautification more so, or to just shield it from view by screening? Is that what that word's supposed to intend there, or?
I think it's to screen it from view, from, from the street.
Okay, and I mean, yeah, when you're talking about the systems up to eight feet, but then if it's, the panel is a, you know, ten-foot panel, if your pivot point's in the center, you could add another five feet and be at thirteen, now you're getting into, you know, roof heights and stuff, so I could see that, you know, I'm a huge fan of solar, renewable energy and all that, I just think that, yeah, that could definitely come up as a concern for, you know, beautification of a neighborhood as well, so, yeah, I think that all probably should definitely agree that needs to be, you know, looked into, refined, thank you.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Are there any standards in cities for putting solar panels on the front of the house where it, it is completely visible?
As far as how they may look, well, that's probably what was in, because the way the consultant worked with us, they often would take standards from other cities, so I imagine they took a standard from another city that basically disallowed those panels from, from view from the street. But there might be cities that have some other standards that we could look at, if that's something you'd like to consider.
There again, what you're talking about is the way your house sits on there, you get the most out of the sunlight, so if you're facing east to west and you want to get the sun coming across, so.
Right.
Mr. Blair, if you wouldn't mind talking into the microphone, please. Sorry.
Yeah, I would just be curious about that because I, I understand the purpose of putting them on the front, that, that's where they're going to receive that solar energy, and it rules out, you know, a certain percentage of people to be able to use solar panel if, if it's not allowed to be put on the front. if it's not allowed to be put on the front. And also, it's very visible when it's on the front of a house as well. So I would just be curious about what best practices are for that.
We can certainly look at it. The house, it's probably most disadvantaged is a house on an east-west running street on the north side of the street, because the main roof is going to be facing south toward the street, and they're potentially out of luck, you know? And that's the concern, so.
Yeah, right there's us as well.
We're in a particular predicament at our home, which I'm looking at for myself, is that we have streets all the way around our house that our home is visible from, and so we would be particularly disadvantaged if we were attempting to do something, yeah? Okay.
So, yeah, we can look at options, you know, either not just taking the condition or the requirement out of it, or looking at some other cities and seeing how they handle it and bring that information back to you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm just curious if the current language prohibits the use of solar shingles, which I know probably we have none in the county, let alone the city right now, but you've probably seen those Tesla shingles that look exactly like slate roof tiles. Would we have to remove what's in there right now to allow something like that to be, you know, present on the front of the house or on both sides or whatever?
Yeah, I would say that the way this code is currently written, it probably wouldn't allow that either, so we want to look at that.
Okay, great. The only other thing, I know we have the transects for the historic district, is there any sort of, like, would we have any concerns with, you know, allowing those solar panels to be on the front of, like, say, some of the homes on Spring Street over here that are historic? I don't know if the code could address that, or...
We can look at that, you know? I don't think the code currently doesn't differentiate between, we do have some residential areas downtown in those transect zones. The code doesn't really make the distinction, but, you know, we could look at that.
All right, something to think about.
Okay, all right. Moving on to the next one. This is probably one of the more complicated ones. It might be a standalone item to bring back to you for further discussion. So we have in the code, we do have standards for height of fences and walls in commercial industrial uses. However, those standards don't mention height allowances in front yards. A lot of districts don't have a front yard setback area, but there are some that do. The code is sort of silent on that. Or height requirements for fences that are not associated with outside storage or fences that barbed wire on it. We do have allowances for screened outside storage as an accessory use in the C3, I2, and I2 zones. Those are the, that's our happiest commercial zone and the industrial zones in Kingman. We also allow screened outside storage yards as a standalone use without a primary use on the property in the industrial zones. We also allow vehicle impound yards in C3, I1, and I2, but we don't seem to have really any standards for screening of those yards, although you would expect that those would have to be screened. Getting back to the setback issue, the C3 zone does not have setbacks in the front yard, except for some places along Stockton Hill Road. They have a 15-foot setback requirement. What are the fence height allowances within that area, or do we allow fences within that area? That'd be one question to try to answer. Currently, there's a 10-foot setback requirement adjacent to residential district. That's the only other setback that's required in C3. I1 and I2 have 20-foot front yard setbacks and 30-foot setbacks adjacent to residential district. Again, where do we allow fences in those setback areas? Be something to look at. So we would support further clarifying, establishing height standards in various setback areas for commercial industrial uses, for front yards, where fences are butted non-residential use, and then fence height requirements for both storage and towing yards, and also exactly what circumstances, we would allow barbed wire on top of fences. Right now, it says you can have two feet of barbed wire on top of the fence, but it doesn't really say exactly where and under what circumstances. So this gets to be a little bit more detailed, more complicated topic, and we may have to bring back some options for you to consider. But just wanted to approach the topic for you and give you some things to think about.
Yeah, would it be possible to break that one out and bring it back for, to get some more references and further clarification?
Yeah, I see this being, like I said, a standalone one. Some of these are relatively simple changes, but this is going to be a little bit more complicated, a little bit more in-depth, and it's probably going to take a few meetings to sort it out, so.
We run into that fence problem before.
All right, any other questions? Okay. And these last two ones are fairly simple ones. We have screening standards for utility cabinets. It's basically screened from a right-of-way on private property, either by a solid fence or wall, or by landscaping. Again, a local developer raised concerns over this requirement, especially for cabinets along residential streets. It's not intended to require screening for cabinets that are there on rights-of-way. It's just on private property, really in commercial areas, but we can probably support having some language in there that clarifies that point. And also, it's not intended to require, say, screening of electric panels on a residential home. I think those were some of the concerns the developer had, so we'll be able to bring back that language to address that. And then the last one, there's just, and I went back and forth whether or not these were more scrivener's errors or substantive, but I went with substantive because it does require some changes, some discussion. The zoning code has a couple of definitions, multiple definitions, but a couple of them there are a little problematic. One is the definition for automobile vehicle sales service, new and used. There's part of that definition that refers to use permit in the CC zone. And so, again, the consultant would often cut and paste definitions from other codes, and they forgot to take this part out of it from some other city. We don't have a use permit requirement for these type of uses in order to have a CC zone, so that just needs to be struck from the definition. And then the last one is, we have two definitions of a single-family dwelling. I think we are going to settle on one definition, but then take the other one out, but somehow it got left in the code. It was just an oversight on our part. So we can look at that to see if we just want to go with one of the definitions, or if we want to modify the definition, combine them together or something, but we'll bring that back for your thought and discussion. So any questions on either one of those?
No. Most of this is just basically general cleanup housekeeping.
A lot of it is. Yeah, some of it is more substantial, and we'll spend some more time on those things. But I think the minor ones, we could probably bring back as early as next month with the language recommended and have you consider making a recommendation on it to the council. The more, the ones that are a bit more involved, especially the ones on fencing, we'll take some time on that one. So that's all I have for you this evening on these items. Any other questions or thoughts?
So what do you need from us? Just an approval to go ahead and proceed with these, or look into them farther?
No, I just, just your feedback is all I was looking for, and we'll bring some stuff back to you the next meeting. Like I said, it'll probably be the minor changes for you to consider approval, and then we could move on to the more substantive ones following meetings.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, public comments, I don't think I gave the public an opportunity to come up here and speak if you have any. All right. Item five, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability of attendance at conferences, seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, requests, reports from staffs. Anybody have any announcements?
Yeah, Vice Chair, I would like to put an item on the agenda for a future meeting just to discuss alternative paving. I know it's come up a few times, and we kind of, I think we all have an idea of what we're after, but we don't have the same terms. You know, if we could kind of just talk about it, that might help us in future meetings when we're presented with an opportunity to decide on it.
Okay. Is that all right?
Noted.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion. Second. All right.